School Board Candidate Forum, sponsored by Edina Public Schools Parent Leadership Council. The purpose of today's forum is to hear from our two candidates, Christina Jordan and Regina Neville, who are running in the special election to fulfill the remaining one-year term of the vacant seat on the Edina school board. My name is Corinne Treewyler and I'm a member of the Edina PLC and moderator for today's forum. Thank you all for attending. Before we get started, I ask that you check your cell phones. Either turn them off or put them on silent. Thank you. We are gathered at the Edina Community Center in Boardroom 349. This forum is being livestreamed and recorded, so please hold your applause until the very end. A recording of this forum will be available for viewing on the district's website later this week. This forum is an opportunity to get to know the candidates running for Edina school board. All candidates who have filed for the office of school board and who will be on the November 8th, 2022 ballot were invited and both are in attendance today. I want to thank our candidates Regina Neville and Christina Jordan for participating in today's important event. Here are the rules and format for today's forum. Speaking order was randomly assigned prior to the forum. I will call on candidates to answer general questions by both first and last name. Each candidate will have sixty seconds to make an opening statement. Each candidate will have ninety seconds to make a closing statement. All candidates will answer general topic questions and I will indicate whether that particular question is allotted sixty seconds or ninety seconds. All candidates will also answer lightning round questions that consist of answering with either a yes or no only. All candidates will raise their provided paddle at the same time to answer the yes or no lightning round questions. In addition to your paddle answer, you will also give your verbal response in alphabetical order. I will indicate your turn with a knot of my head. Members of the PLC will be tracking your time and will indicate to candidates whether you have thirty seconds remaining, fifteen seconds remaining, and when you must stop. 15 seconds remaining, and when you must stop. The PLC solicited questions from our parent leaders and attempts in good faith to cover as many topics submitted as possible within the time constraints. All questions are the property of Parent Leadership Council. One final note, if you need a question repeated at any time, just let me know. Let's begin. We will start with an opening statement from each candidate. Each of you will be given 60 seconds to respond. We will begin with Regina Neville.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Regina Neville, and I'd like to thank the Parent Leadership Council for hosting this forum. I'd also like to thank everyone who's participating here and watching the recording to become informed about this year's Edina School Board election. My husband Tom and I have lived in Edina for 22 years, and we're the parents of three proud graduates of Edina High School. I've consistently served Edina Public Schools in multiple leadership capacities for over 20 years. I'd be honored to serve in this year ahead with the depth of experience I've accrued with 12 years of school board experience. I've acquired knowledge in school finance, policy development, and collaboration. I have classroom teaching experience, and I continue to work with students at Valley View Middle School in the theater program. Please vote for me and learn more at www dot Regina for, or Neville for Edina dot com.
Christina Jordan.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here this morning and giving us the opportunity to speak to you all. I am a lifelong resident of Minnesota and a 25-year Edina resident. My career in education spans over 33 years, and 25 of those were spent as a Minnesota public school teacher. The last eight years, I've worked as an independent education consultant, partnering with educators on a national level to help develop best practices in education. I've experienced education from the inside at all levels, and I have worked on groups to bring community and schools together. Edina has traditionally been a leader in Minnesota education, preparing generations of students for success. I'm running for school board because I see opportunities for growth, and I want to ensure that future generations receive the same level of quality education that my three children had. We owe it all of our stakeholders to get back to our best and honor our commitment to defining excellence.
Thank you. The following is a general question. You will each have 60 seconds to respond. Why are you running in this special election? What experience and abilities do you bring to the board, specifically what differentiates you as a candidate? We will begin with Christina Jordan.
So I alluded a little to that, I think, in my opening statement. I've been a lifelong educator, and anybody who knows me knows that education has been a passion of mine even when I was a young child. And I chose Edina as the school district to have my kids go to school, and they received an amazing education here. I'm running because I've had a lot of community members come up to me and say that they feel like their voices aren't being heard. And I think what differentiates me is that I have seen education inside and out. I traveled the country. I work with school boards. I work with them on their strategic plans. I work with principals and superintendents. We do audits on what's working and what's not. So I've seen best practice. I've seen what is being successful and what is not across the country, and I can bring that wide perspective to Edina Public Schools. And I think that's something that we don't have on our board right now, and I think we need to welcome some diversity of thought, and I can bring that to our school board.
Regina Neville.
I have the necessary experience to serve in this one-year term, replacing Lenny Wallen-Friedman, who had 12 years of school board service. And I've also had that number of years of experience, both on the Edina School Board, where I served for eight years, and on Intermediate District 287, where I served for nine and a half years. They overlapped. That's how you get to the 12. But I know how school boards work. It's at least a year to learn how it works. So that learning curve wouldn't be necessary within this particular one-year term. I understand policy. I have financial guidance experience. I've collaborated with superintendents. A lot of my work with Intermediate District 287 and with Edina Education Fund has been in mental health and wellness, which is a significant need of our district, and in literacy and literacy support. So I believe that I have the necessary background and collaboration relationships put together to serve in this year.
Thank you. The following question is a general question with 60 seconds for response time. What would be your approach with the current board to collaborate and lead? We will begin with Christina Jordan.
So I think that's a pretty broad question, because at its core, our job as a school board is to collaborate and lead. So first of all, as somebody who is new to the school board, but certainly not new to the process or new to education as a whole, I would listen, not only to my fellow school board members, but to our community members as well. I've spoken to many groups across our community, from students to our Somali groups, our Asian groups. I've spoken to conservative groups and liberal groups and neighborhood groups. And in every single one of those arenas, people have said to me, "Please, please, please, if you're on the school board, listen. Give us a place to voice our opinion. Make sure that everybody's voice is heard." So I think that would be my number one goal, is to make sure that we listen. And not only that we listen, that we do something with that information.
Regina Neville.
Building relationships is key to the collaboration with everyone in the district, and specifically with my colleagues who would be on the school board and the superintendent. So building on relationships that I've established and working with them in the past, but also listening to the ideas that they bring to the table. The advantage of a school board is that there are different points of view, and that all informs the decision-making process. So I hope to continue to learn from what they offer and listen so that I can make informed decisions. I also appreciate and welcome the opportunity to support this group, because we're all working in the same direction with an excellent school district and looking for opportunities to improve.
Thank you, candidates. There will be 90 seconds for the following question. The first sentence of the Edina Public School mission states, "EPS is a dynamic learning community delivering educational excellence and preparing all students to realize their full potential." What does this mean to you, and how would you measure if this is being delivered? We will begin with Regina Neville.
Dynamic learning community is a fantastic phrase, and I appreciate it being in the mission. It applies to each of us individually, as well as to our district as a whole. So it speaks to the potential of each of us as both students and educators. And we're all educators in different capacities, whether we are parents, working with our students, educators in the classroom, and community members supporting our students. So dynamic means a willingness to change and grow. Our opportunity as a school district is to look at where the gaps may be, if they are opportunity gaps, learning gaps, and find ways to support. So that phrase in the mission indicates a district that is willing to grow, willing to listen to best practice that may be from other communities, listen to the voices in our community, and address how can we make the adjustments that are necessary to provide the resources and also the learning environment that is welcoming and supportive for all of our learners, regardless of what they bring to the school. We want to celebrate what they bring and then give them what they need to move forward.
Christina Jordan.
So I think that we have a wonderful vision here in Edina, and I think that we need to look at that and truly follow that. But in that, dynamic means that sometimes we need to be willing to take a chance. In education, I feel like a lot of times, and this is not just an Edina thing, this is across the board, no matter what state I'm in, we look at the new shiny, and we sort of implement it because it's the fun thing to do or the cool thing to do, and then we get rid of it, because it just wasn't serving us right. So in truly being dynamic, we need to be willing to take a chance, but not only to do that, but actually implement things with fidelity. I think we need to offer diverse programming for our students. We're doing some really cool things. I met with Dr. Stanley the other day. She told me about the science space program. Oh my gosh, that's the best thing out there. We should do more of that. We also should listen to our student voice, because we are shaping what they are living every single day. And when I met with the Student Senate the other day, they said they want more choices. They want more creative outlets. They want to explore more vocational opportunities. And I think being dynamic is also reaching outside of our community, partnering with what our students truly need and want, and making that happen for them.
Thank you. The next general question is a 60-second response time. How can the district ensure that its mission and vision are applied consistently across all schools and programs, yet still allow for individual school and program identities and cultures? We will begin with Christina Jordan.
So as I just stated, I think that everything that we do in our district should be funneled through the lens of our vision and our strategic plan. That's why we have it there, right? So that should be our overarching lens for everything we do. But that being said, every school has its own culture. Every school has its own makeup of students that make it unique. And certainly where I taught, I taught at a school that was radically different in financial, cultural, diverse makeup. We didn't fit with the rest of the district. So allowing every school to still hold true to that mission, to look at unifying our tests and applying that across the board, but allowing for individuality in the programs that some schools may need versus others is something that's really important, because if we're really individualizing instruction for our students, we need to make sure that we have the flexibility to give each site what they need.
Regina Neville.
Implementing the mission and the strategic plan begin with policy. And part of the role of school board is to take a look at policy and make sure that it is equitable in what we say and in how we want to bring things forward. So part of our policies in place already address the fact that, one, funding needs to be equitable across all sites. So it's taking a look at the support that different sites receive and how we as a district support them. But that said, there's always the opportunity for personal choice and voice, and that's what builds the unique identity of each of our schools and each of our programs. So each of them might have a different opportunity for focus with either a language or a STEAM focus that is a great fit for each individual student. We celebrate that, and then at the meantime, make sure that no one is identifiable by their site or learning program in their ability to achieve success K through 12.
Thank you. We now move to our first lightning round. The answer is either a yes or a no by raising your paddle, and then your verbal response, each time in alphabetical order. School boards are a nonpartisan position. Have you or your campaign accepted financial support or endorsement from a PAC, a political party, or a political campaign?
This is not a yes or no answer for me. Sorry.
No. Do you think politics should influence teaching and instruction in the classroom?
No.
No. Do you think politics should influence board members and school board policy?
No.
No. Have you or will you participate in any partisan-based forums?
No.
No. Have you received support or endorsement from Education Minnesota, the teachers' union?
No.
Not yet. That will come out on October 13th.
Do you support federal school vouchers for private education?
No.
No. Thank you. We now move back to the general questions. The following is a 60-second answer. What is your view of equity in education? Do you agree with how equity is addressed in the strategic plan? We will begin with Regina Neville.
Equity is foundational in our school community for all of our students and for everyone who is a part of Edina Public Schools. And this is embedded in our strategic plan. It also needs to be embedded in how we welcome people to our community, how we create a safe learning environment and a supportive learning environment. So some of the issues that have been identified with our One Town, One Family conversations are that we're a community that's steeped in rich tradition. Sometimes those traditions are not welcoming. Sometimes there's a feeling of a lack of belonging. Sometimes we normalize bad behavior. We have the opportunity as a district to be introspective, to learn what we don't know, to unlearn what might not apply any longer, and to listen to each other so that we can grow together. It starts with individual growth. I'm committed to my individual growth so that we can serve each other collaboratively.
Christina Jordan.
So equity means removing barriers for our students and our educators in their environment. And I agree with Regina when she says we need to be open to conversations. We need to learn about each other and understand each other so that we can provide an environment where everybody feels like they belong. That should be core at every building across our district. But equity doesn't only mean racial equity. That's a part of it, and it's an important part of it. But it also means financial and educational equity as well. We need to make sure that our students with IEPs, our students that are dyslexic, and our parents that maybe are struggling right now to make ends meet have the barriers removed so that they can be successful in our school district as well. And so when we talk about equity, we need to look at all of those things and make sure that the barriers are removed for all of our students that are struggling with something so that they can learn in the environment that best suits them.
Thank you, candidates. There will be a 90, there will be 90 seconds to respond to this question. What specific ideas do you have to improve culture and climate in our schools to ensure all students feel welcome, respected for differences, and enjoy an overall sense of well-being and belonging? We will begin with Regina Neville.
Climate does make a difference. We all know when we feel welcome, when we feel a sense of belonging, and when we don't. So creating climate starts with, one, that invitation to join, to belong, to be part of. That invitation will look different depending on who's receiving the invitation. So it might be something posted on a website or in a newsletter, but I think it's important to ask, is the welcome mat out? Can everybody read it? And what do we feel when we get inside the door? So what we can do is continue to listen with the One Town, One Family discussions, partner with the city and the community, partner with parents and community members. Student voice is key. Our Student Senate speaks beautifully to this when they shared with me their opportunities for growth, which is just communication, making sure that their voices are celebrated, making sure that we celebrate a range of things that are important. So athletics, academics, achievement in individual activities are important. Reviewing that list, is it a comprehensive list? So it's listening to voices. It's adding partners to the table. And I think with that intense listening and continuing what we have in place, we'll continue to build a better culture.
Christina Jordan.
Could you repeat the question, please?
What specific ideas do you have to improve culture and climate in our schools to ensure all students feel welcome, respected for differences, and enjoy an overall sense of well-being and belonging?
I think that one of the things that is truly a gift here in Edina is that we have such a big such a big school. There really is a lot of opportunity for people to belong. And I remember when my kids were in school, like, I was amazed. There was a fishing club and there were an archery club and all these things that my friends didn't have as part of their kid's schools because they weren't in such a large environment. That being said, because we are such a large district, we do need to make sure that we are hearing those voices of our students and our families. When I met with the Student Senate the other day, I sort of just let them talk and they had a lot to say. And one of the things that they wanted to make sure that people knew so that they felt welcome and understood was that they're more than a number and a test score. They wanted to, I wanted the leaders to know that excellence means more than just academics. So I think providing avenues for them where they can engage in things beyond just academics. I also think culture in the schools expands to our families. And I think that we need to make it easier for our families to attend. We have a lot of working parents in our district. Let's have meetings at times that work for them. We have a lot of families that don't speak English as their first language. Do we have translators for those people at our meetings? I've never seen it. Also, let's provide childcare at our meetings for our families so that if they are at home with small children, they can still come, be a part of the process, and make sure that their voice is heard.
Thank you. You will have 60 seconds to respond to this next question. What, if any, experience do you have with our multilingual community and families of color? How do you plan to engage these communities in your work as a board member? Christina Jordan.
So the 25 years that I spent working in the Robinsdale School District, I taught at a school that was directly across the street from Brookdale. My student population was 95% free and reduced lunch. 75% of my student population were students of color. And of that 75%, 40% did not speak English as their first language. So I lived that every day for 25 years. I also was in charge of school community liaison at our school. So I was the person who helped implement the programs that welcomed our families into our school, made sure that they understood our processes, made sure that there were interpreters there, made sure they had transportation to our schools. Like I said just a minute ago, I think we need to look, stop thinking that we are a two-parent, one-income household. We're not anymore. We're a very diverse community, and we need to reach out to those members of our community that don't feel that they fit into that mold. And I have 25 years' experience doing that because I lived it in my classroom every day.
Regina Neville.
Well, my first experience is with my students at Valley View Middle School. And I'm grateful to have a diverse group who are interested in theater, and I'm interested in theater. So I learn a lot by working with them every day. But on a larger scale, I've had the opportunity to be a part of Intermediate District 287, serving our Edina students and other students from our total of 11 collaborative districts where the majority of our students are students of color. I learned a lot as a board member with professional development and working with our educators and students to hear their voices. Within Edina, I'm active with the Anti-Racism Collective to actively promote racial equity and healing with our community. I've had the opportunity to meet with a representative of the Edina Asian American Alliance. I've also participated with our students when they had a walkout last spring in response to some hate incidents in the school and to just listen and share that hurt that happened during that opportunity.
Thank you. Now for another lightning round. Candidates, please grab your paddles. Remember again that these are yes or no answers only, and then your verbal response in alphabetical order. These following questions are aimed at understanding what you have done to prepare for potentially being a member on the school board. Have you visited at least one elementary, middle, and high school this past year?
Yes.
Yes.
Have you volunteered in or for any of our schools since the start of this school year?
No.
No.
This is a three-part question. Have you connected with any teachers at the elementary level to understand their goals and challenges for the 2022-2023 school year?
Yes.
No.
At the middle school level?
Yes.
Yes.
At the high school level?
Yes.
Yes.
Have you spoken with at least one principal in elementary, middle, and high school in preparation for running for school board?
Yes.
Yes.
Have you attended at least one regular board meeting in its entirety in the last year?
Yes.
Yes.
Have you attended at least one board work session in its entirety in the last year?
No.
Yes.
Have you taken the time to speak with the superintendent in preparation for this role on the school board?
Yes.
Yes.
Have you taken the time to speak with our assistant superintendent or any members of the district leadership team in preparation for this role?
No.
Yes.
Thank you. We now move back to the general questions. You will each have 90 seconds to respond to this next question. What do you consider to be the two biggest successes for Edina Public Schools in the last year? On the flip side, what is one area of opportunity we need to improve upon? Please be specific. Christina Jordan.
Well, I think that we always seem to receive national and statewide recognition, and that's something that we have achieved again this year. We were just voted the number-one college prep school in the nation, and that is no small task. Our teachers work very hard with our students. Our curriculum is rigorous to help allow us to prepare our students for college. I have three recent graduates myself. They were very well-prepared for college by the Edina Public Schools. So I think that that's not just a success this year, but also a success that we have had in the past and hope to continue to have in the future. I think that looking at our literacy program is another success that has happened in the past year. Looking at how students develop language, how language is acquired, as students learn how to read is something that is a really big accomplishment that has been achieved by our school board. Our teachers are going to be receiving the right professional development so that they can implement those reading practices. And so I think that that is a huge win for our school district and our school board as well. One thing that I think that we can, could improve on is our community communication. I think we have a lot of people who feel like they aren't part of the process, and we need to do a better job with that.
Regina Neville.
Our niche recognition, from the organization niche, as the number-one school for best college prep is impressive, and it's something we've had repeatedly, and it's worth being proud of. It's also impressive that we've launched the Dual Language Immersion Program and expanded our STEAM opportunities. FastBridge is another specific implementation that's making a significant difference in early universal assessment for both math and reading literacy. Moving forward, what I know we're already doing, but isn't this opportunity for improvement, is expanding our math opportunities and our math assessment and support. Again, it's something the district has addressed. It is moving forward, and I know that that will be successful. Another opportunity for improvement is just continuing to develop our culture and our listening as a district to students, educators, parents, and community.
Thank you. You will each have 60 seconds to respond to the next question. If tasked with budget cuts, what one thing would you focus on cutting first? And if you could add something, what would it be? We will begin with Regina Neville.
Budget cuts, budget adjustments, as we often refer to them, are the most challenging aspect. Well, there's a lot of challenging aspects. It's challenging because with budget cuts, we want to protect the classroom, and that's always the leading question. So in terms of making a budget cut, it would be something that takes it, that protects the core classroom instruction. And rather than a specific cut, it often, the opportunity is for generation of revenue. So I would look at opportunities for generation of revenue. But if we need to lose something, it's just taking a look at any of the, any of the needs that are, it's people. It's really hard to take a look at people and say, who can we, you know, possibly cut back on? And then we need to develop partnerships. What I would put back in first is people. People in the classroom, para support, educators, any opportunity to support educators.
Christina Jordan.
So this is a tough one. And I don't think we can just say I would cut from here first. I've lived through budget cuts as an educator in a district. And the reason that we have programs and resources and places is because we feel they're valuable for our students. So to just blanket say I would cut this, I don't, I don't think I could do that without analyzing and looking at actually where we're spending our money. That being said, I would agree with Regina when she says we need to keep our educators our focus first and not cut from there because they are the people who are with our students every single day, and they are essential in delivering our strategic plan. So if I had to add something back in, assuming that we already had money to do it, I think I would add more diverse opportunities for our students, like in the arts, and to explore other avenues because that's what the students told me last week that they wanted.
Thank you. You will each have 90 seconds to respond to the next question. In education, the learner support needs of students are diverse, whether it's intervention for special education, meeting the needs of high-achieving learners, or any touch point in between. Specifically, if there were a limited and declining budget, how would you go about prioritizing the needs of various groups of students? We will begin with Regina Neville.
The core of meeting students' needs is finding, finding out where they are. So as opposed to intervention, I think that a better match for Edina and for our students is meeting students where they are, identifying those needs. Sometimes it's for acceleration. Sometimes it's for building foundational support. And often for our students, they're making 12, 18 to 24 months of progress within one year. That's extraordinary and something to be celebrated. I don't know that one need can be prioritized over another. That's not how our district works. I know that we take a look at the needs across the board and we figure out how to get there together. So that's a partnership answer. It's gathering the data that's necessary to make the decisions, analyzing that data, and then working in partnership with our organizations such as the Edina Education Fund, Edina Give and Go, filling opportunity gaps, and working with our educators who know our students, who have those relationships, and building that instructional size into that one-on-one opportunity to make sure that students are met where they are.
Christina Jordan.
So this is what I do in my job every day. When I meet with school districts across the nation, I go in and I help them do an audit of what they are using in their school. So when we look at Edina, we would want to take a look at the MAP test that we're giving all of our students. There's a wealth of information that we get from that test. Are we utilizing all that information? We can get summative and formative data on achievement from that test. From there, are we allowing our educators time to meet and analyze that data, to use that data to differentiate instruction within their classroom? If we're not, we need to make sure we're giving educators that time because only then can we assess where our students are. And looking at that data frequently is really important, and not just the MAP, but the formative assessments that our educators are doing as part of their regular classroom instruction is important to look at too because when we differentiate instruction, those groups need to be fluid. I could be in one group this week because I completely missed a concept and then be moved up to another group in another month. And so digging into that data, making sure we're looking at multiple data points that are both summative and formative, and not only looking at achievement but ability too. And I know we've moved away from looking at ability in Edina. And I think that if you really want to focus on where those children are at and we're truly taking a whole-child view of our students, we need to look at both ability and achievement, and we need to look at what we're already utilizing and make sure that we are deriving all the data from that that we already have.
Thank you. We're now going to move back to a lightning round. This one is short. Remember, yes or no answers only. Do you know the, excuse me, do you know how the state funding formula works for public education?
Yes, but I'm not an expert on it.
Yes.
Not an expert.
Do you know the per pupil amount the state provides to our district?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you know the total annual operating budget for Edina Public Schools?
I do not.
Yes. Thank you. We're going to move back to the general questions. The following is a 60-second response time. Per the strategic plan, literacy is identified as a priority for the district. Do you think any progress has been made in the comprehensive literacy plan? We will begin with Christina Jordan.
I touched on this a little bit earlier as this was one of the wins for our district. Again, I work with schools all over the country, and more and more schools are moving away from that whole language approach. I think this is the exact direction that we need to be going. We need to be looking on how language is acquired, and that's not only going to benefit our students who are going to be good readers anyway, but that will help our students that are dyslexic, and that will help our students that are EL. And so I think that we are going exactly the right direction by doing that. I know that our teachers are receiving professional development on how to deliver this instruction in their classroom. I'm familiar with the professional development that they're receiving, and it's spot on. So I think that this is a really great thing for us. It will serve more students across the board equally, and it will benefit our educators as well.
Regina Neville.
The district is making great progress in literacy. And when the district is addressing literacy, it's both reading literacy and math literacy. And there's a specific plan in place that is being implemented to support both. FastBridge assessment has been extraordinary. It provides a comprehensive assessment earlier in the school year for students. It is a more efficient test to deliver, and it's data that can be implemented right away. The letters training for instructors expands their professional development to recognize specific reading issues, and dyslexic being one of them. But any kind of reading issue that a student needs, how can we get the tools that we need within our educator staff to address those needs? Math, I've addressed earlier. I know that the district is also working with math in its literacy plan to roll that out and make sure that students have support. But part of that support that was implemented was with community ed earlier this year with support classes to get students ready for math courses.
Thank you. You will each have 60 seconds to respond to this next question. How should EPS support the social and emotional health of all its students and staff? We will start with Regina Neville.
Supporting the mental health and well-being of our students and staff is foundational. Students can't learn unless they are feeling safe and feeling that they're in a welcoming environment. The same is true for our educators. This is a stressful position. Teaching is hard. And there's often what I've heard called a wind chill factor from Jeff Jorgensen. This is true, I think, for all of our educators. Being in the classroom is one thing, and then there are other things that come at you. So this is foundational. The partnership with the Edina Education Fund has been extraordinary. I was fortunate to chair the Ed Fund Board when we worked together to expand our mental health access in the buildings with Frazier. And I know that we can do more to expand mental health services and support for our educators. This will, this will provide a better foundation for all of our students and our staff.
Christina Jordan.
So my, my graduate work is in psych... So my, my graduate work is in psychology, and so this is something that I feel very passionate about, is the, the mental wellbeing of not only our students, but of our teachers. You know, and I, I think we can all agree that we've come on the other side of a very trying couple of years for everybody involved. And some of our kids are doing great and some of them aren't. So we need to make sure that we are checking in with those kids. We need to make sure that in our SEL curriculum, that is part of our everyday teaching anyway, right? We, that's always been part of teaching, that we're giving students the opportunity to voice any concerns they have. And we need to check in on our staff. Because the relationship between staff and students is very intense, and we spend a lot of time with those students. And so if the teacher's not okay, sometimes that transfers to the student, and when the student isn't okay, it transfers to the teacher. And it's sort of cyclical that way. So we need to make sure that we have programs in, in place for support, and that we are checking in with everybody in our school community to make sure that they're doing all right.
Thank you. You will each have 60 seconds for this next question. Collaboration with and getting input and feedback from teachers is important. With limited teacher contract hours, how do you plan to get teacher voice and input into board decision-making? Christina Jordan.
This is an area where I think the partnership that we have with the union is going to be very key. We have the union as the voice of our teachers, and they speak with our teachers all of the time. And it's, and it's their job to make sure that their teachers feel supported and have the proper contract in place to do the job that they need to do. So partnering with our union, I think, is a really big piece of that. There are surveys we can do, but we really actually need to look at the data that comes out of those surveys from our teachers. And we need to sit down with representatives from our educating force to make sure that we are implementing things that are supporting them. And I don't know if that looks like a town hall for teachers, or if we do that just through surveys or through the union. But giving them a voice where they feel comfortable to share what they need, and then responding to that, I think, is one of the most important jobs as a school board we can do.
Regina Neville.
This is about partnerships. And with partnerships comes the need to find time. So time is a commodity that if we can find any ways to flex it, it can be helpful to bringing people to the table. Teachers have the, the knowledge and the educational expertise to inform our decisions, to inform our curriculum. These are the people we need at the table. So asking questions when we come to a decision, who is at the table? Is there any impact from that decision that will be a negative impact? And if there is, how can we mitigate that impact? So finding ways to flex the time that we have to gather that voice, to partner together, and then to develop the decisions, whether it's policy or curriculum, is going to make a difference. The union is certainly a key partnership, but also intentionally reaching out to teachers by grade level, by site, and by specialty expertise.
Thank you. Now for our last lightning round. Candidates, grab your paddles. And again, yes or no answers. Should teachers and principals have input into deciding what courses are offered in their buildings?
Yes.
Yes.
Should it be required that the district teaching and learning department be involved when the board is crafting or modifying policy regarding new course offerings?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it appropriate for the school board to be involved in selecting specific literature and textbooks for EPS classes?
Yes.
No.
Do you think our current course offerings provide enough rigor for our students?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you think our current course offerings provide enough intervention or learner support for our students?
No.
No.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our final general questions and then hear closing statements from each candidate. The next question is allotted 90 seconds. What is the biggest area of challenge in elementary, at the middle level, and at the high school? How would you approach addressing these issues? We will start with Christina Jordan.
I was an elementary school teacher for 25 years, so I'm pretty certain that some of the things that I had as a challenge are universal across the board. As an elementary school teacher, you have a whole class in front of you that you are charged with teaching every subject all day long. And in that classroom, you have diverse learners. So I think at the elementary level, time is something that we need to make sure our teachers are getting. It was certainly something that I needed. Time to make sure that I could look at my students' data, review my curriculum, make sure that my students were grasping the concepts that I was teaching in my classroom, and making sure that I had time to adjust my curriculum and diversify in my classroom to meet the needs of my students. And when you have 28, 32, a large group of students in front of you, that's a really, really big task. I think at the middle and high school level, middle school is, you know, those are special teachers who teach middle school. They, that's a challenging time of life for kids and parents alike. But I think making sure that we have the emotional support resources at the middle school is something that I heard from the students. They feel like the counselors have to deal with academic things. They would like to make sure they have a place to go when they are struggling with just being a teenager. And at the high school, I think, making sure that we offer a wide range of classes and that we have the teachers to deliver those classes to meet the needs of all of our graduating students.
Regina Neville.
Well, there are certainly lots of opportunities that are a through line throughout early childhood to grade 12. But to be specific at each level, for elementary, assessment, identification of potential need, the earlier the better. So it happens pre-kindergarten when possible, but when students enter elementary school, it's identifying what those needs are and a strategy to address them. With that is developing a love of learning. To develop that love of learning in elementary school is a gift that we can give an individual that can last through their lifetime. Middle school, it's about development and belonging, so honoring choice and voice, and also providing that support that each students need in middle, middle school to navigate academic choices, but also personal choices. For high school, involvement is key. Students who have an extracurricular activity of some kind do better, and that involvement needs to be coupled with a trusted adult. So developing adult relationships needs to continue through high school, so students have someone in addition to a family member who can listen to them. And then guiding post-secondary choices and opportunities, making sure they know what's available, and that they know what that path is to access what's available. So though, that's a key for, for high school. But love the kids. That's key at all levels. They need to know that they are loved and the community cares.
Thank you. This general question is 60 seconds. How would you sell or market Edina Public Schools to a family moving into our community? We will start with Regina Neville.
It's probably some of the same things that invited me to move here 22 years ago. This is an excellent district and an excellent community. And it's fantastic because of the opportunities in school. But with a, with a community that has a minority of families who live here, who have students in school, it's important to recognize that this community supports education. They've supported it by approving levies and bonds to support our schools, and you feel that when you come here. I would encourage families to come and then to ask questions and get involved. And find ways, there are so many ways that they can get wrapped around to be supported. And by joining here and finding the opportunities, we have liaisons, we have cultural liaisons, we have building liaisons, we have parent councils, we have amazing neighborhoods. So it's reaching out and saying, nope, you're not alone. Someone else has had that question. We're going to figure it out together.
Christina Jordan.
So we certainly have a reputation for being excellent in education, and that has preceded us for decades. I, I grew up in Bloomington. I knew that Edina Public Schools were great schools to go to even when I was in high school. And I, I chose to move here. As an educator, I chose to move here and have my children educated in these public schools because of the reputation. I would share with people that because we are such a large community, there's a place for everybody to believe, to belong. Like I stated earlier, there are areas for kids to get involved, no matter what their interest. And I would echo what Regina said, that we really do value education here. It's very rare that you are in a community that passes referendum after referendum after referendum. And we do that here in Edina. And so our support from our community, whether they have kids in our schools or are not, is very strong. And I think that is felt collaboratively within the schools as well.
Thank you. This following will be our last general question, and then we'll hear closing statements. This question will be allotted 90 seconds. What educational innovations outside our district would you like to bring to Edina? We will begin with Regina Neville.
The district is incredible in that it's always looking for innovations outside of the district. Having the consortium of like districts that was here in our community just a couple of weeks ago is evidence of the fact that we're always looking for that opportunity to improve. What I would like to add, that we're, we're already moving toward, but it's partnerships to build community within our schools. This will help everyone feel that there is a place where they belong, that their voices matter, that all of our differences are important and valued. And I don't know what that program is, other than what we're creating ourselves. I mean, I know, think there's a lot out there, but the fact that we have one town, one family, as initiated by Dr. Stanley, that we have partnerships with groups when our, within our community who say, yes, we want to come together, talk about this, learn, and partner because our relationships are going to impact our students in a positive way. So the innovation is what we are actually creating. To have the conversations, to do some of that personal introspection, to examine my own self, how can I do better? And now, how do I find the people who I can talk with, with whom I want to move forward together?
Christina Jordan.
So traveling around the country like I do, I see so many cool things. I mean, I can't even think of one thing that I would say, oh, we need to have that here in Edina, because there's so many. But I know that when I spoke to the students the other day, one thing that they were very adamant about is that they want opportunities to explore careers earlier. And I know this is something that a lot of states require of their high school students. They are required to take plumbing, and becoming an electrician, and nursing, and teaching, and ROTC, and computer programming, their junior and senior year, so that they know if those are things that are interesting to them. So I would suggest partnering with our, I know we have partnerships with Normandale Community College and VOTEC schools around the area. I would strengthen those partnerships. And because our numbers too, when we look at our PSEO, we see that students are going to those programs outside of their high school days. So I would strengthen those partnerships. That's one way I think we could be really innovative with our students. I also think that, again, this goes back to what I keep saying, listening. What does our community want? What innovations are they seeing out there that they would like to see in our community? We heard that they wanted a steam option. We listened to that. They wanted a dual immersion program. We listened to that. So like I said, there are a lot of really great things going on right here in our own district, but also out there across the country. And listening to our community to decide what they want and what works best for us is what we should do.
Thank you. Now we will begin closing statements. Each candidate will have 90 seconds. We're going to start with Christina Jordan.
So first of all, thank you again for allowing us to have this platform, to come and share our ideas with you. We appreciate you being here and listening to our thoughts. Anybody who truly knows me knows that my belief in helping every child reach their full potential is fundamentally who I am. So strongly that I've dedicated my entire career to education. For me, being an educator was really a calling. My three children have graduated, and I'm really thankful for the high-quality education that prepared them for their future. Ensuring this excellence for future generations in Edina will take intentional work that involves digging deep, asking the tough questions, using data to drive our instruction, and partnering with administration to ensure that implementation of our strategic plan is happening and welcoming diversity of thought from our community and from within our own school board. Taking a one-year position on the school board will be challenging, but I am ready. I see what's working and what is not nationwide through my work with educators at state and local levels, and I collaborate with them on curriculum, assessment data, and understanding the complexity of what happens in the public school system. That is a perspective that no other board member can bring to the board, that global perspective of education. On the school board, I will work tirelessly to achieve that we reach our motto of defining excellence. And I think that my broad vision will only serve to enhance the current vision of our leadership, ensuring to our community that Edina Public Schools continues to be on the path to excellence that has always defined us. Thank you for your time today, and I hope I earn your vote in November.
Regina Neville.
Well, thank you to the Parent Leadership Council for hosting this forum, and for everyone who's attending and listening to the recording. As I hope I've shared throughout the forum, I have the necessary experience to fulfill the demands of this one-year term. I've been an effective leader of multiple education and community organizations, both while my children were in school and since their graduations. I will work hard as an advocate for all of our kids. In my core values, I believe that every child matters. Every child can learn. And every child deserves a welcoming and safe learning environment. Education has the power to touch every child so they recognize that they matter, and they have the potential for excellence. And they are supported on that journey by a community who believes in them. We're fortunate to have an outstanding school district and a supportive community that is open to improvement. I'm committed to Edina Public Schools, and I look forward to serving as I listen to students, families, and educators communicate what's important to them. Please visit my website at nevilleforeedina.com, and please vote for me on November 8th. Thank you.
We have come to the end of our candidate forum. The PLC wants to thank each of the candidates for taking the time to join us this morning. We greatly appreciated the opportunity to learn more about both of you, and we thank you for your willingness to serve the students, families, staff, and community of Edina Public Schools. I also want to thank our audience for attending and the Edina Parent Leadership Council for hosting today's event. As a reminder, a recording of today's forum will be available online soon at www.edinaschools.org. And finally, please remember to vote on November 8th. Thank you.